Welcome, everybody. Welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. How are you tonight? I hope everybody is, uh, gonna be able to stay on this call for the whole hour. Um, again, if you do have a question, please press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone. We really appreciate you being on the call in the first place. So, again, good evening and welcome to our first ever Telephone Town Hall Meeting in the city of Hallendale Beach. Tonight, we welcome your questions, and it's for City Manager Roger Carlton. You can ask him anything you want. Um, if you wanna do that, you need to press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone. And what happens is, uh, somebody will get your question queued up and will bring you on live to ask the question. Or, we can read it over the air if you're more comfortable that way. Um, uh, let's see, we're gonna be talking about, uh, um, all sorts of different things. And so, if you do have a question, again, press zero. Um, th- these, these calls I, I get to be part of a lot. And, uh, so you just go and you ask your question and, um, we get it answered right away. It's not a back and forth situation. It's just you ask a question, boom, you're done. And, uh, we'll get it answered one way or the other. So, again, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Again, thank you so much for joining us. Press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone if you wanna ask us a question. Press seven, seven on the keypad on your phone if you wanna provide us your email address so we can send you email updates from the city. Uh, we have somebody standing by to collect your email address. So, again, it's zero for questions and seven for email addresses. Um, when you do get to one of the screeners, if you are pressing zero, you got, your neighborhood, your name would be, uh, greatly appreciated. Obviously, your question as well. One last time, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Again, if you do have a question, please press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone. Press seven on the keypad on your phone if you wanna provide us your email address so we can provide you email updates. And we see some people are taking us up on this, and that's just great news. So, City Manager Roger Carlton, go ahead and take the call away if you would, please.
Thank you, Kurt, and good evening. Uh, I know that many people who are listening are very passionate about our great city. This is where we live, where we work, and where we play. We have everything here, and it's a great city. But lately, it appears that some members of our local media have ignored all the good and positive things that are happening in Hallendale Beach. As your City Manager, I am responsible for more than six hundred employees who are your public servants, who make sure that essential services of this city are available to all of our residents and visitors. Tonight, I am here to take your questions, clear up any inaccurate information that may have caused you to form a negative opinion of your city. There are lots of great things happening, and I'm here to answer your questions, to give you feedback, uh, and to hear your feedback about our departments, and to make sure that our department heads can immediately tackle any of the issues that you choose to bring to my attention on tonight's call. Tonight's Telephone Town Hall Meeting is unprecedented. There is no way to fit more than three hundred people who are, uh, in our commission chambers. But tonight, we expect to have more than five thousand of you joining in our Telephone Town Hall. At the end of the call, you would be given the opportunity to leave a voicemail message for me. Rest assured that my team will get back to you. We also will be posting the audio of this call in its entirety to the city's social media and our website. Please share that post with your friends and neighbors if they did not have an opportunity to participate. Tonight, we'll be dealing in facts and not conjecture. This is good news to share, and we want to reach as many of our residents as possible. Because despite what you read in the local media, we have a lot to be proud of in Hallendale Beach. With that in mind, let's turn to the first call.
Well, you bet. We have some people queuing up right now. Again, for the people that just joined us, if you do have a question, please press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone if you wanna provide us your email address for email updates, please press seven. Luciana, you are up. Welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. I hope I pronounced your name right. Go ahead with your question, please.
Yes, hi, good evening, everybody. Um, my question, I have actually two questions. One is residential, the other one is commercial. I do have property on both places, and I do have, have questions for both. Um, the first one, it would be the residential. I wanted to find out how, uh, is the new program coming along, the Neighborhood Improvement Program? And what, what are the, um, the benefits, eh, for, for that, um, for that plan?
All right, well, thanks for that question. It's really a good one. Uh, First Avenue, uh, for those who may not know all of the geography, is the road that parallels the railroad tracks, uh, from, uh, let's say, Hallendale Beach north to Fifth. That's the area of Fashion Row. Over the years, it has been a, a very successful area, and then it kinda fell down on its luck, and it's starting to come back right now. But our plans are to enhance this image of, of being a place to go by fashion, to be able to walk comfortably, to go to, uh, some great restaurants, maybe even someday to have some housing all tied into it. And we're in the process of developing a plan. Uh, it will be brought to the city commission for their review. Will be involving the building owners and the tenants. So, there's some exciting things that are gonna be happening to bring back Fashion Row.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Do we have an estimated time about like when the, this, this plan is going to be, uh, in place?
Well, we're actually bringing, uh, some recommendations to the city commission, uh, who sit as the Community Redevelopment Agency in this case, uh, in about two weeks. Uh, so, this is really gonna boil up soon, and assuming that they're okay with it, you know? They make the policy, they decide what our direction will be. But assuming they're okay, I think you'll see some, uh, meetings held, some, uh, strategies further developed, and start to see some improvements, uh, uh, in certainly less than six months. That's our goal. Uh, we don't sit on our hands. We bring recommendations, we listen to the citizens, we get direction, and away we go. So, uh, thanks for calling in. This is a very important item. Let's move on to Donnell Brown.
Oh, hold on, hold on one second. Um, let me bring Don- Donnell up. Welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Go ahead if you would, please, Donnell.
Yes, hi. Uh, uh, City Manager, uh, this is Donnell Brown. Listen, uh, I was thinking, I was talking about, uh, I have just two questions with you, uh. I see the, uh, um, the construction that you're doing now Foster Road, but I'm trying to wonder, is it, any kinda, um, business is gonna bring some economic change, uh, to the, to the community of the northwest section? And also, uh, the plaza that you put up over here on, uh, Foster Road, across Foster Park Plaza? Uh, is we gonna have any community relationship for us like, uh, uh, City Hollywood does? Every week, they have, um, a venue going on every, every day of the week over in City Hollywood? But we have anything going on in the northwest section? Uh, I think it'll be something that we can come, we can look at, uh, to do something every Friday that, uh, bring the crime down, where people have something to do, uh, consistently, um, looking forward to like, like, once a week, um, of, um, of the month, where we'll be able to come together as a community? Because right now, we have anything to do positive in the northwest section besides, uh, go to Obie Johnson Park, or either to the gym.
Uh, Donnell, I, uh, Donnell, I think I, I hear what you're saying. And for those, again, who are listening, who might not understand the, uh, the geography, uh, Foster Road is in the northwest section. That has traditionally been a neighborhood that needed a lot of public investment, higher unemployment rate, and, and a bunch of other issues, including crime. Uh, as City Manager, I am completely cognizant of that. Uh, I can tell you that we have a new police chief, Sonia Quinones, and she has been focusing on reducing crime all over the town, including the northwest section. And the latest statistics on crime are way down. On the economic development question, uh, Foster Road is a, a street that kinda goes off at an angle, uh, through that part of town. Uh, there is a lot of vacant property, property there, and there's a number of housing units that are currently being built, with more to follow. Uh, the Foster Square Park that you mentioned was just finished, uh, about two months ago, and it is a beautiful little park, uh, uh, that, uh, is quite nice. And it was built, uh, by a local contractor as well, uh, uh, and a student who graduated from our high school was very much involved in the design effort. So, this is a park that, uh, was done by the folks who lived there. Very excited. Now, the activities that you were talking about, uh, to have more events is a key thing. You have to get people comfortable with coming out of their homes, with visiting there, with, uh, uh, if we can get some more stores. Uh, and there's a big project that I'm actually negotiating, uh, tomorrow at Foster and Dixie. Uh, Dixie Highway is on the west side of the railroad tracks. It's been vacant land for a long, long time, and, uh, now it's gonna go productive with housing units and retail stores. So, we are committed to this part of town, uh, as we are to the whole town. There's a lot of things happening, uh, and, uh, I'll close on this question with the, uh, recent celebration of Martin Luther King Day. And, uh, this is an event that went off without a hitch. It was secure. Uh, people were using a park there, uh, thousands of people came out to, uh, commemorate, uh, I think a hero to everybody, Martin Luther King. And we want to keep this momentum and this energy going. So, thanks for the call. It's an important part of town, and it's part of our focus.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we wanna do our first survey question, if we can. You get to press one, two, three, or four to vote on the keypad on your phone. Here goes. Uh, the city has various ways to communicate official information with its residents. Which one is the most important to you? If it's email sign up, press one. Social media, press two. The website, press three. Or the newsletter mailed to your, via, to your home, press four. Again, what's the best way to communicate with you? Which one do you like the best? Email, press one. Social media, press two. Website, three. Or the newsletter that's mailed to your home, press four. We really appreciate your voting. This is very important. Okay, let's take Mark while you're voting. Mark, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Mark, please go ahead with your question.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Roger, and, uh, all those out in the audience. Um, mine was related to, uh, traffic, and particularly on South Ocean Drive. Uh, while I think the length of our property, uh, that is, the city's property of Ocean Drive, runs probably about a mile, uh, from Hallendale Beach down to the, uh, gate there of, uh, uh, Golden Beach. Uh, the traffic, uh, is enormously fast, uh, literally twenty-four, seven. Uh, just a great deal of high-speed traffic. And I know this probably be of, uh, Sonia, uh, the Chief of Police, uh, as, as we, as you just described, would be of interest. Uh, as they get down into Golden Beach going south, they immediately descend down to thirty-five because they run radar. They have a discipline which has gone on for years. But, you know, as I count up the crosswalks, Roger, I may be off by one or two, and I apologize. But there are ten, approximately ten pedestrian crosswalks that take to the ocean. Um, and there's enormous amount of foot traffic, and there has been some substantial accidents along the way, but the speed is.
So, is your, is your point that you, you're worried about the speeders there and all the people that are walking back and forth? Is that your point? If, 'cause I can answer that.
Yeah, that's the point.
All right, well, let me, let me tell you, I'm super patty-coated to what you're saying. I won't say what building I live in, but I live on, uh, Ocean, uh, Drive. So, I drive to work every morning there, and I drive home every afternoon. I can tell you that in the afternoon, the traffic doesn't go fast. It goes really slow. But during the day and on weekends, you're right, there's a good bit of speeding that goes on. There are only four access points to the beach, and they do have ways that people can walk across. But I have listened to what you've said. We're keeping a list of action items. And I promise you that I will, uh, discuss this with our Chief of Police, uh, tomorrow, and that we will, uh, put out some patrols there and write some, uh, citations for these speeders. So, thanks for bringing that point to me, uh, uh, and it's an important one, and we're gonna do something about it.
So, we did a, our first survey question, it went like this. "The city has various ways to communicate official information with its residents. Which way do you like the best?" Email was, uh, forty-eight percent was the newsletter mailed to your home, forty percent were emails, nine percent was social media, website was four percent. So, leading the charge was the newsletter mailed to your house and email right after that. And so, I guess I ju- I just wanted to let everybody know what was going on with that. If you do wanna sign up for the email, um, you know, get your email address in so we can send you stuff, we need that email address, and you can do that right now and give it to us by pressing seven. Seven on the keypad on your phone, seven, if you wanna get on that email newsletter list. Okay, Eleanor's next. Eleanor, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Eleanor, go ahead with your question, please.
Yes, Eleanor Herkert. Roger, we've, uh, been at the commission meetings and met you, and also at, uh, a meeting that was held for the parking on Diana Drive. I wondered what is happening on that and, uh, uh, what's going to happen to our parking places.
Well, you, you, let me, again, have everybody understand. Diana Drive is a parallel street to Hallendale Beach Boulevard on the south side, and it starts basically near the intercoastal and runs for a few blocks. Uh, uh, and eventually, you can, by going through a variety of little streets, get yourself over to Publix. Once you're at Publix, that's it. It ends. Uh, our long-term goal is to continue, uh, Diana Drive, uh, and some of the other streets all the way over to, uh, US One, to trick some of the traffic if we could off of, uh, Hallendale Beach Boulevard. That's a long-range project, but it's a goal. Now, what's happening in the section that you're talking about is that, over the years, uh, four different buildings have, uh, used parking because they don't really have enough on their sites that is in the public right of way. And those four buildings unfortunately don't have sidewalks in front of them, making it somewhat dangerous for pedestrians. So, through a lot of planning and meetings and talking back and forth, there've been many different solutions, uh, looked at. But the current one does do away with twenty-one parking spaces, uh, and replaces them with sidewalks. But right across the street, uh, in some cases, less than fifty feet away, we're adding fifty parking spaces in this redesign. So, I have to be honest, there's gonna be some folks who are unhappy about this. Uh, we've placed it on the agenda of the next, uh, city commission meeting, uh, for further, uh, conversation. Uh, that meeting is February twenty-first. You can go on our website, uh, W W W dot C O H B dot org, uh, to verify the, the meeting. And we'll do it at a time certain so that if folks come, they don't have to stay all night. So, again, not making everybody happy, uh, but we're gonna come up with some loo- solutions to add spaces. And again, I thank you for your call. I wish I could say in my career that I made everybody happy all the time, but that would not be the truth.
(laugh) Okay. With that, since you were, uh, putting out addresses and stuff like that, why don't we, uh, tell everyone, the people that are listening on the call, different ways to contact the city socially? For instance, Twitter and Facebook and all that stuff. Go ahead, Roger.
Okay. Let's start with email. Uh, um, it's social at C O H B dot org. Um, our website, W W W dot C O H B dot org. Uh, Facebook is Facebook dot com backslash, I'm sorry, forward slash, again, Facebook dot com forward slash city of Hallendale Beach altogether. Uh, and then, if you're kinda old-fashioned like me and you wanna call, uh, nine five four, four five seven, one three zero zero. And during the day, somebody will answer the, uh, the call and, uh, take down your message, and you will get a response. So, I'll be repeating those a little bit later in the call.
Let's do our second survey question, if we can, of the night. Goes like this. "Aside from viewing city commission meetings, do you or your family watch the Hallendale Beach, uh, Cable Access Channel? And if you do, would you like to see more locally-produced public information on this cable channel? If the answer is yes, press one. If it's no, press two." Again, the question. "Aside from viewing city commission meetings, do you or your family watch the Hallendale Beach Cable Access Channel? If you do, would you like to see more locally-produced public information on this cable channel? Press one for yes and two for no." We appreciate you voting on that. Meanwhile, while you're voting, yes or no, one or two, we're gonna take Carol. Carol, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Carol, go ahead with your question, please.
Hi. There was talk, uh, a couple of years back, and as recently as a year ago, about the golf course property. There was going to be some additional, uh, building of a hotel and some demolition work. And I haven't heard anything in the last, uh, year or more. I wonder if you can bring us up to date on that property?
Sure will. Uh, you're talking about the golf course that's known as the Diplomat Golf Course.
Yes.
And it is going to remain a golf course. Let me make that very clear. Uh, there, uh, has been a, um, sale negotiated for that property to a new developer. I don't think it's closed yet, but it's, uh, fairly imminent. Uh, having said that, uh, we have had conversation with the, uh, potential buyer. They are very much aware of the need to scale down, uh, some of that proposed development, which was approved by, uh, previous commissions. Uh, and they seem very, very concerned that what they do is an asset to the community. So, I can't predict the final project, but I don't think it'll be as big as the one that was originally approved. And the building that was the spa there, uh, and some hotel rooms, uh, uh, is gonna be greatly upgraded. And, uh, I believe it is their intent to bring a world-class operator to that site. So, it will be a, a great asset to our community and, uh, a place where people who wanna go to a spa can go, a place where guests can go, and it'll bring visitors who will be going to our restaurants and, and, uh, bringing, uh, new jobs to our community. So, don't worry, the golf course will remain. Thanks for calling.
Um, if anybody wants to ask a question, this will be my last ask of this. Please press zero, zero on the keypad on your phone. The people that have already got your question in will get to you as fast as we can. Also, if you wanna provide us your email a- address, press seven, seven on the keypad on your phone. Uh, the results of the second survey went, though, the question went like this. "Aside from viewing city commission meetings, do you or your family watch the Hallendale Beach Cable Access Channel? And if you do, would you like more locally-produced public information on this cable channel?" Yes came across at sixty percent. That's pretty good. All right, but anyway, just wanted to tell you what was going on with that. Let's now take another question, if we can. It's gonna be from Brian. Brian, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Brian, please go ahead with your question.
Uh, I'd just like to ask why, why the city doesn't let you only get waste management? I live in a building, and they said, when I called in, the sanitation department, they says, "Oh, we need to get two days of service with the city." I don't feel that's fair because anyways, the city's charging me on my waste management bill a franchise fee.
Your thoughts, please?
Well, uh, again, a little context to that question. Uh, the city provides, uh, solid waste collection, garbage collection, to all the single-family homes and to a large number of the multifamily buildings and the commercial sites. But we don't do every single building. There, there are some that are done by a number of waste collection private companies. And they do pay a franchise fee, uh, to the city, just like, uh, Florida Power and Light does, and the phone companies, and, and all the other utilities. So, I, uh, uh, would need to know more about which building this is, and if, uh, we'll call back to the, uh, to the caller and get that information probably tomorrow, and then we'll be able to give a very specific answer.
Brian, I don't want you shooting your address off over the air, but, uh, we do have your contact information, and we will reach back to you tomorrow, one way or the other. If you wanna reach out to us first, it's social at C O H B dot com. But expect to call back, uh, Greg will tag it and get back to you one way or the other on that. So, that's the best I can tell you right now. We, we don't wanna get into the nitty-gritty over the air. Okay? And then, on dot org, dot org, sorry. C O H B dot org, not dot com, dot org. Duh. Anyway, sorry about that. Claire's next. (cough) Claire, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Claire, go ahead with your question.
Yes, hi. My question is, I have a disabled daughter and son. I'm very concerned about their transportation. I know it's contracted out to the county. I would like to see drivers that understand these kids when they get, because they can't travel any other way. I would like to see they, their time-wise purpose, not twenty-four hours before because of the kids in a wheelchair and has to go for an emergency to a doctor the next day. Why can't they call that day? I would also like to see a little bit more, um, drivers being polite and nice and understanding these, these kids. When I say kids, I'm talking thirties, forties. I'm not talking about elderly. I'm talking about these kids that are strictly wheel, wheelchair-bound. And I'm very disappointed because if they tell you seven, they can show up at nine, and it's not fair.
Okay.
Okay, Claire, uh, Claire, first of all, that's my granddaughter's name, so it's nice to hear from you. Uh, but this is a, a very specific question, and I believe, and I'll check this, that the transportation service for the handicap comes from Broward County and not from us. But I will have somebody call you tomorrow, uh, from our social service department and go over this issue and see what help we can give you to make sure that your kids get the kinda service that, uh, that they deserve and that a caring government and a caring program should be giving you. So, we'll follow up. Thanks for letting us know.
All right. Let's take another question, if we can, right away. And, no, I think we should take the last survey question, make sure we get it in with a large audience that we have on right now. "Mobility is a huge issue in Hallendale Beach. How do you get around?" Press one if you drive your own vehicle. Press two if you take the Broward County Transit. Or press three, use the Hallendale Beach Free Shuttle Bus. Those are the three options. How do you get around? You drive your own vehicle, press one. Press two, Broward County Transit, press three, the Hallendale Beach Free Shuttle Bus. We appreciate you voting on all that. Meanwhile, let's take Patty. Patty, welcome to our Telephone Town Hall Meeting. Patty, go ahead with your question, please.
Yeah, hi. I live on the northeast, and I've been living here for a while. And I don't, I don't see any affordable housing on this side. Why?
Patty, that's a great question. Uh, let me explain to people who are listening that affordable housing, or some people call it workforce housing, means, uh, housing that, that people who make certain income levels can afford to pay the rent or possibly even to buy the house. Uh, that is a great struggle throughout South Florida and throughout many areas of the country. And because we have so many restaurants and other type of service businesses, the salaries that people make here, uh, in many, many cases, just will never let them buy a house or even rent a place to live, uh, that's a decent place. We did a survey of the city about two months ago, and we found that there were three hundred and seventy-three vacant properties that possibly could be either single-family affordable homes or, uh, multifamily. That was kinda the baseline, that there are properties that could be bought. And we are developing a program now that has subsidies to the developers to bring down the construction costs or possibly, uh, help people with down payments, and there's just a whole variety of ways to deal with this problem. Uh, another one is that, uh, developers would pay an impact fee into a, uh, fund that would help us to, uh, to do more of these. Uh, so, the commission is committed. They gave us direction to move this program forward. And, uh, uh, it doesn't get solved overnight, but we're very much aware of it, and we share your, uh, uh, feeling about, uh, there being a shortage, 'cause there is. We're not alone in Hallendale Beach. This is all over the South Florida area and in many parts of the country. But we're not ignoring that problem. So, thanks for giving us focus on it and bringing it up, and, uh, wish you good luck in your house search. And if we can be of help, uh, we'll get back to you and we'll give you some suggestions. Uh, 'cause we actually have staff people who do help with these programs. So, thanks. So, thanks.
The people on this call, eighty-eight percent take their own vehicle, three percent use Broward County Transit, ninety percent use the Free Shuttle Bus. Just thought I'd pass that out.
Those are interesting results, that eighty-eight percent drive their own vehicle. And we're working on something called a mobility plan. Mobility is, to some people, traffic, traffic, traffic. And how do you deal with that? And every town in South Florida is getting more and more tourists, more and more buildings. First thing, good news. We're ranked number first, number one, in a grant application that we have to what's called the Metropolitan Planning Organization to better time through computerization our signals. I drive Hallendale Beach every day. Nothing is as frustrating as getting a green light, then a red light, then a green light, then a red light. And a lot of that happens because all the cross-traffic slows the thing down. If we do the computerization, and that's what we're working on, we will better coordinate these lights all the way on Hallendale Beach from the intercoastal to I-95 and on US-1 all the way from Hollywood down to Aventura. So, an exciting thing happening. We hope to get this funding in the next six months. We're ranked number one of all the applications and it just takes a little time. But it will make that better. And there's many, many other solutions that are going to be in this mobility plan. And it will be posted when it comes out, probably be ready in about two to three months. So, not being ignored, being worked on, and it is probably our highest priority.
Well, thank you, sir. Mr. Timianko, I hope I said your name right. Welcome to the call. Go ahead with your question, please. That's coming up. I don't hear him.
Is he there?
No, he's not on yet. I don't know, it's kind of frozen in time for a second or something like that. Anyway, while he's coming on and stuff like that, why don't we, if we can, first, um, I'm going to try him again, just a second. Here we go. See if he pulls in now. There we go. Go ahead, sir. You're up. Sorry about that. That was my computer malfunction.
I think the gentleman just said something about the computer slides. But my question is, the intersection with Dixie and Hallendale. If you can avoid cars making a left to Dixie from Hallendale coming east or coming west to it away, I think the traffic will be a lot faster. Problem is that every time you drive on Hallendale either from east to west, the other, Hallendale Boulevard and east to west, I guess only one side has the traffic. The other side doesn't have the way to go. May I make myself clear? I think the left turn is the problem.
Yes, you have. You're talking about Hallendale Beach Boulevard, I think basically at the railroad tracks. That is one of the most complicated intersections, not just in Hallendale, but in South Florida. Because not only do you have two sides, one-way streets on the east and west of the railroad tracks, but Hallendale Beach is a six-lane road and there's left turns to be made. So, the cycle, it's called, of letting all these movements happen takes a long time. And if you've ever been there when a train comes through, it takes a long time and repeated cycles to get it back to normal. So, I can't tell you that there's an instant solution to that. We're constantly working with Broward County, which controls all of the signals and the timing. And as you know, there were some bollards there and those bollards were recently removed, which I think has helped the eastbound traffic on Hallendale Boulevard immeasurably. But maybe, and this will be discussed in the mobility plan, the only way to really solve that intersection is through an overpass. That's not a policy yet, something being discussed. So, every intersection is difficult. I could go down the long list. Timing them all right to move the traffic is very, very difficult. But it's very high on our priorities and I appreciate your bringing it up. But rest assured, we are working on it.
We have a bunch more questions, so let's plow through those. We've got Kathy up next. Kathy, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Kathy, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, I live very close to the line of Hallendale Beach and Hallendale Beach. And I too, I've been a long-term resident over forty years. And I too live on Ocean Drive. So, you and I have, I'm sure, similar awarenesses and challenges. My question deals with the commission of Hallendale and the commission of Hollywood and possibly even the people from Dania. There's so much impacting all three, mostly the eastern part of all three cities. And I wonder how much communication and sharing and planning goes on on a regular basis in and among those three people that are making the decisions that impact the lives of those of us that are undergoing this change?
I think that's a great question. You know, we can't focus just on the west or the south or the north. We have to focus on all parts of town. A-1A is the road you're talking about. And right at the bridge over the intercoastal, which is in Hallendale Beach, if you're on the north side of that, you're in Hollywood. And then three-quarters of a mile or a mile to the south, you're in Golden Beach. But we are meeting with four cities right now. Fort Lauderdale, Dania, Hollywood, and Hallendale Beach, who've entered into compact, I'll call it, to try to bring the transit line that's going to be running from downtown Miami all the way to Aventura, to have that continued all the way up to Fort Lauderdale. And there's a lot of energy behind that. There's a lot of goodwill. And I really think that the ultimate solution to vehicular traffic is to convince people to take some other ways to get to work or to get around, whether it be our minibus or, believe it or not, walking or bike riding or using transit if they're going a longer way. So, we recognize what you're talking about. I drive it every day. And I think you bringing it up is very appropriate and your comment's been registered. These solutions are extraordinarily expensive and there's so many units of government that are involved that you can't turn them around in a second. But the commission has made it very clear to staff that they want solutions to our parking issues, our bus issues, our transportation issues in general. And by and large, they want new development to pay its fair share of those costs through impact fees. So, we are on the case. Thanks for that comment.
With that, and we've got a bunch more questions to take, let's take Holly next. Holly, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Holly, please go ahead with your question.
Yes, hi. I live in, on Three Islands and we've had power outages three days in a row for like a half an hour at a time. And they say, "Oh, well, you know, it's going to be fixed, it's going to get fixed." But it, it just keeps going on. It's been three days in a row now. And it's scary when you think your food might go to waste and all that kind of stuff. So, I was just wondering why, they said it's a, the transformers. And so, why can't they fix that? I don't understand.
Well, I, I don't work for FPNL. And, but I do work for the city commission and everybody in this town. And we are in constant contact with FPNL. I don't know if people realize it, but after Hurricane Irma, the second city in Broward County that was one-hundred percent up and running was Hallendale Beach. And that happened for a variety of reasons. One is that we have a great relationship with them and that we've worked with them. The second one was that their base for this entire area happened to be at Gulfstream Park. So, that was just luck. So, they would work on our issues first. But we'll follow up with you tomorrow because I want to find out, you know, where you live and if you can keep a record of these outages for us, we will get on the case. So, we'll call you. Thanks for letting us know.
Greg, mark that record in the reports, if you would, please. I appreciate it. And they'll come up overnight so we can get back. Elena's next. Elena, welcome to our... Elena, I'm sorry. Elena, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Go ahead with your question, please.
Okay. Can we hear your question?
Elena, go ahead. I will read the question. Northwest near cemetery, program to help those, help with house repairs. Again, the question, northwest near cemetery, that's where she is. Program to help with house repairs was her question. Your thoughts?
Okay, just so folks know, that the city does operate a cemetery. It's done so for many, many years. And if you're interested in history, that is a great place to go and look at some of those grave sites. But the question here is, what about house repairs? There are many houses in Hallendale Beach that we look at and we have something called code compliance. Our goal is to help people to get them fixed. Our Community Redevelopment Agency has a number of programs that range from painting your house to helping it to become more hurricane-resistant to major, major repairs. So, I will have our CRA people tomorrow call Elena and get her in the queue and get her the information she needs.
Thank you, sir. I'm looking for the next one. There we are. Anita, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Anita, please go ahead with your question.
Yes, yes. My question's very short. I have a friend that lives on southeast Second Street going west towards the, towards the railroad tracks. And there's this little patch of street right off US-1 on southeast Second Street that's so full of holes, I cuss every time I go down that street. With all the beautifying they're doing on these other streets, why can't they fix that?
I'm surprised to hear this. Steve Parkinson is our Public Works Director. And I want to find out exactly where these holes are. We're out every day patching. And if there's someplace that we're missing, we'll get on this case. So, we don't want your exact address, but tomorrow you'll get a call as well. And, or if you want, even tonight, you can use my Hallendale Beach app to report it. So, that's what you should do. It's my, M-Y-H, beach. Use that, take pictures even of where they are. And this will help us to get our crews out there. If you're not good at computers and using your phone, we're going to call you. So, I don't want you to get a flat tire and we're on the case. Thanks for letting us know. Robert, are you there? We might be having a little technical difficulty here, so everybody, please be patient for a few seconds. Okay, I'll read this question. Comes from Robert in the southwest section. "The grass is about two feet high." And then he gives an address. "Code enforcement has been out there before. Can someone follow up with this?" Got it on the case. We call it code compliance because we try to get voluntary compliance. But if it doesn't work, there's a long process we have to go to. And it goes all the way to leaning or we can bring somebody in. So, I have the address here. And tomorrow, I'll be talking to our code enforcement, code compliance person. And we will be on this case. But you can also use the myhbeach dot, I'm sorry, myhbeach app. Or again, you can call in. There's any number of ways that you can get to us so we can follow up on this one.
Sounds great, city manager. Thank you.
Okay, good. You can hear me. The technology's working.
Yeah, loud and clear.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty high. And, uh, it's, well, it's further complicated. Like, they must have had some problem there because the police had four police cars here the night before and the fire department was there in the lot. I'm not sure if there was an alligator in there or what it was. But, but, um, but I...
We have a lot of alligators at Hallendale Beach and some of them have two legs and some have four.
I'm sorry, I'm back. I don't know what that meant.
Thank you very much. We've got the address here and we'll be on this case. Every one of these code enforcement issues is very complicated, but thanks for letting us know.
All right. Let's take Paul next. You can hear me loud and clear now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let's take Paul next, if we can. Paul, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Paul, go ahead with your question, please. Go ahead, Paul. You're up. Paul? Increase of population...
Let me read Paul's question. It's, and he's from Golden Isles. And it is, "What about the increase in population? How do you plan to handle the traffic that results? How do you plan on improving traffic patterns?" Well, let's talk a little bit about finance for a minute. You know, a lot of cities in Broward County can expand and hold down their tax rate because they can annex new land. We're landlocked. So, ocean on one side, the interstate on the other, and two cities to the north and south. So, we don't have the ability just to expand and take in new property. So, we have to find ways to raise our tax base and spread the expenses of the future over more residents and more businesses. And you have to do that very carefully because a taller building means more cars and more parking and, and more people living here and using our facilities. So, the solution is what you call good development. Buildings that aren't too big for the site, buildings that relate well to the ones that are near them, buildings that pay their fair share through impact fees. That gives us the money we need to come up with solutions. And that's what I'm all about. I believe that's what our commission is all about. And we're working very hard with some existing projects that have been approved over the years that haven't been built yet to bring down their size. So, we're knowledgeable about this. And I mentioned earlier in a response that we're doing a mobility plan that has a whole variety of solutions that will go through public hearings and meetings. And people will be able to respond to it. Some people like some of these things, some people don't. But it is foremost in our priorities to do something about the traffic issue. It is critical to improving the lifestyle of our community.
Anne, welcome to our call. Anne, go ahead with your question, please.
Hi, excuse me. I wondered about the King Tides. A few years ago, the city of Hallendale talked about getting some type of pumps for the King Tides. But so far, the last two years, I haven't heard any more about it. So, I just want to know, do you have any plans to get the pumps for King Tides? Or will there be a higher tax for Hallendale Beach to get the pumps?
It's a great question. The King Tides, for those of you who haven't heard that phrase, happen twice a year. And it has a lot to do with the moon and the tides. We also have sea level rise, which some people deny, but most people believe are happening. And then, of course, we have hurricanes and other storms that force water into our drainage systems. We're aware of them all. Uh, we're aware of them all. Uh, we have, uh, what's called a stormwater utility that, uh, people and businesses pay for, uh, uh, adding to our drainage system. The northeast drainage project was finished about a year ago on Fourteenth Avenue. We're beautifying that area now so that it'll finish off that project. And we're, uh, very soon, uh, gonna be, oh, we are out to bid on a southwest drainage project. These projects come in at around fifteen million dollars each, so this is not a cheap thing to fix. But there's a plan. We start in the northeast, we go to the southwest and, uh, uh, and then we try to expand those. Now, folks who live along the canals know that in Hurricane Irma, uh, the water was just about to the top. Luckily, it didn't come at anybody's houses, but it certainly could. So, uh, big pumps is basically the solution. I don't think anybody wants to raise our streets. Uh, um, but, you know, that's an alternative. Uh, so we need to deal with this. It's a fact of life. Uh, I am not a denier of, uh, the crisis that we're in. I'm the first one to say that we are in a crisis. And we are working on something called a sustainability study that looks at not just drainage and flooding and tides, but it looks at ways that we can reduce what's called our carbon footprint. That means, uh, how do we, uh, have cleaner cars? How do we have cleaner buildings? Uh, uh, so a lot of stuff going on, on this and it's a great question. I'm glad that somebody out there is concerned about it. So thanks for that call.
Let's take another Anne next if we can. Anne, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Anne, please go ahead with your question.
Hi, um, I just moved in not too far from the Obie Johnson Park. And when you're driving around, we're seeing, um, um, like furnitures or big pieces of trash just in front of the houses or in front of multi-unit, um, um, apartments. So how does this work exactly? Because I know they pick up the trash on my side every Thursday. So how does this work? Why are there those, those pieces just there and nothing is being done about them?
Well, I, I, I wouldn't say nothing is being done. Uh, uh, we run trucks all the time, uh, to, uh, pick stuff up. Uh, but you're right. Some people, uh, just not good neighbors and they will, uh, dump stuff out of their pickups rather than paying to, uh, to go to, uh, a proper landfill. But again, uh, use myhbeach app. Uh, take pictures, uh, uh, get a tracking number and you will get a response. But, you know, we want the cleanest city on this planet. Uh, uh, but to do that, we need help from our citizens to report stuff like this. And I, I don't want you to ever confront anybody, but if you could get a license plate number, uh, and let us know what that is, I promise you, we will follow up. But be careful. Don't confront anybody because you just never know what's gonna happen. So a key concern, uh, we want a clean city that everybody can be proud of and it's a constant effort to keep it that way.
On Facebook, and we do post a lot of updates on Facebook. What's that address to Facebook so people can get to us on Facebook again, please, Roger?
It's Facebook, I'm sorry, facebook.com/ CityofHallendaleBeach altogether. Facebook.com/ CityofHallendaleBeach altogether.
Um, let's take a couple more questions and try and fit them in in our hour if we can here. Eric next. Eric, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Eric, please go ahead with your question.
Yes, hello. Uh, my name is Eric. Um, this, this is a property in the Walmart shopping center parking lot at Three Island Boulevard and Hallendale Boulevard that's been vacant for about ten or twelve years. It's an old, uh, one-story executive office building. Are there any plans for that property that you're aware of?
Uh, the city doesn't have plans. I know the exact building you're talking about, you know, and Walmart is Walmart. They're a big chain. It, it is amazing to me that it stays empty because that's one of the busiest, uh, per square foot revenue Walmarts in, in the whole country. Uh, those of you who live near it know it's open twenty-four hours a day and it is busy. Um, what I think is gonna happen on the east side of Hallendale Beach Boulevard before you get to the bridge is that some of those older shopping centers that, uh, are underutilized are soon gonna come under, uh, development, uh, uh, to be a combination of housing and retail. Uh, I suspect that Walmart, uh, will have, uh, more business coming, uh, uh, and that they'll do something with that building. But I don't know if there's some specific issue, why it's tied up, but, you know, if there's a building, uh, I'd like to see it full. I'd like to see it productive and, uh, and, and be worth more and more on the tax roll. But I don't have a specific answer on why that building is, um, vacant. Uh, but I'll tell you what, I'll have one of my people make a call to, uh, Walmart and see if they actually own it. Sometimes those buildings are out parcels owned by somebody else. But you've piqued my interest to check into it and I will. Thanks for calling.
Oh, I bet one of the cronkys own the Walmart. Anyway, um, let's start with one of the Walmart folks. Maria's next. Maria, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Go ahead with your question if you could.
Hi, how are you? I'm wondering why there's no recycling of cans and plastic bottles. I live on Three Islands. We used to have a big bin by John Scalvo Park. My community, my complex doesn't, uh, regulate this. They don't tell us we have to do it. They just have recycling for newspapers. Now, there's two hundred and forty-two units here. I'm on Three Islands. How is that regulated by Hallendale?
Well, you, you raise a great point. Uh, I, I wish that I had Sue Fassler here with me. She's my, uh, environmental coordinator, my sustainability person. We affectionately call her the green lady. And, uh, um, there's a lot of older buildings, and I'm not familiar with your particular building, that weren't designed in the days of recycling. Uh, uh, so they don't have place for the machines that do the recycling or for the extra dumpsters that you need to separate out the recycling. So the boards don't enforce the policy because they don't have a, a solution that's, uh, realistic. Um, but we're doing a lot of other stuff. Uh, uh, for instance, uh, there's much talk now about, uh, banning plastic bags. Uh, uh, the city is looking at an ordinance to, uh, uh, keep all of our styrofoam products that we use, uh, to, to not allow those in parks anymore. So this sustainability question is very important. We have a coordinator, uh, I gave you her name. But, uh, we'll have somebody call you tomorrow and, and get your address. And if it's possible to, uh, talk to your building, uh, uh, we'll, um, see if there isn't anything that can be done. So thanks for letting us know. Um, uh, maybe we need to have an ordinance on this, uh, or a program that encourages buildings to, to get more environmentally sensitive. And I will tell you that, uh, our sustainability coordinator is dedicated to this twenty-four by seven.
Beatrice, welcome to our call. Beatrice, please go ahead with your question.
Yes, I live in Three Islands in the private homes. And I was promised, uh, nine years ago by Joy Cooper, the then mayor, um, that I have a, the dog park, which is the size of my closet, was going to be just decided to be how much it was used. And might I add, it is used twenty-four seven, um, all around the clock. It is absolutely, completely, uh, undesirable. I was wondering, in the new plans, with the whole new reevaluation of the tennis court area and I might add, the bocce ball court, that I have done a two-year study by license plates of Canadians only. It is used basically two and a half months a year. Is that going to be dissolved? And am I gonna be promised a dog park worth anything or do I?
Okay. Go ahead, Roger.
All right, well, we, we heard your question, uh, um, little bit of a speech and little bit of a question, but that's okay. Uh, long story short, for those who aren't aware, uh, we are very close to completing the design of, uh, new tennis courts, uh, bocce courts, uh, uh, and a much expanded and improved, uh, dog park. So we've listened to the citizen input on the design of this park. Uh, uh, the new park is just gonna be gorgeous. It was part of a, uh, general obligation bond issue that was voted on a few years ago by the, uh, uh, people of Hallendale Beach and passed by a good solid majority. So my job has been to get these, uh, parks designed, uh, have them be as efficient as possible, uh, get them out to bid and get them built. Uh, so this new park, uh, or let me say, replacement park is just gonna be fantastic. Very quick on the, the notion of, uh, who uses that park. Uh, that has to do with overflow parking from a nearby building and we have had the police out there, uh, warning and ticketing the people who are using the parking lot that shouldn't. Uh, and, uh, we'll continue to do that till everybody learns that they need to park in their own buildings and, uh, not use these public spaces. So thanks for your input on that park. It will be much better when it's rebuilt.
Carla's next. Carla, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Carla, go ahead with your question, please.
Hi, good evening. It's very nice to have this call. Thank you so much for having it. Um, my question has to do with the, uh, uh, swale that exists, um, on the north side of Hallendale Beach Boulevard, right after the bridge, almost, uh, right where Walmart is, but by the sidewalk. Um, that is an area that is always full of water, trash. Uh, it's just very unsightly on a, uh, uh, an area that is, uh, that the sidewalk there is heavily trafficked by pedestrians and it just seems like a dangerous area. I understood that there was-
Let me, uh, let me help you with this. Um, uh, um, we wanna try to get as many people as possible, uh, in the call. I know exactly where you're talking about. Uh, that little area belongs to the Florida Department of Transportation. It was kind of a leftover piece of land when they rebuilt the bridge. If you wanna talk about cleaning the swamp, this is the swamp that needs to be cleaned. Uh, we are on their case and I have great respect for our fellow, uh, employees at FDOT. Uh, they have promised us a design and get it out to bid so that it drains better. As soon as it drains better, we'll relandscape it and take over the maintenance. So we're fully aware of it and we'll do something about it. So thanks again for, uh, being observant and bringing it to our attention.
Okay, let's take Bernard next. Bernard, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Bernard, go ahead with your question, please.
Hello.
Hi, Bernard. Go ahead with your question.
Hi. My question is, um, on nor- the northwest, um, Third Street coming across the railroad track. Um, um, I spoke to somebody from the city last year about they're gonna be widening the road or, um, because, uh, we have homes in the back of that Third Street and there's a lot of people have the right of way we have to maintain. And they said it was gonna be widening the road or putting parking on the side because I think down from the water plant, they're gonna be building, I don't know, condos or something and it's-
All right, Bernard, I, I've got you on this one. Uh, right now, Third Street is under construction from US One to the railroad tracks, uh, um, like every construction project, I get complaints about how long it takes to get through the light and so forth. But when that's finished, it's gonna be a beautiful road with two lanes and longer turn storage lanes and landscaping and, uh, lighting and street furniture and it's really gonna be nice. The next phase that we wanna do is to take it from the other side of the railroad tracks all the way out to the public works yard. We did apply for a grant to do that. Uh, it wasn't ranked as high as the one I mentioned earlier, uh, about the signals. Uh, but I hope to find the money to continue, uh, that improvement uh, all the way out to, um, uh, what is it, undeveloped piece of land, but we do own it near the public works yard and go as far west with it as we can. So you're absolutely right. We need to continue that and, uh, it's on our radar screen and we're trying to find the money to do it. So thanks for asking that question. It's a very important project to us.
Sandra, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Please go ahead with your questions, Sandra.
Hi, yes, good evening. Uh, my question is on permits and, uh, inspections. I know that we have a great deal of building going on, which we're glad to see. But is this delaying, um, permits, um, and inspections in our city for just individuals or commercial?
Well, Sandra, another great question. Uh, we had partnered with a couple of, uh, uh, private companies who were, uh, helping us because inspectors are hard to find. Plans reviewers are even harder to find. So the answer is we were caught up, but I will tell you, and ever since the first of the year, the plans are just coming in in unbelievable quantities. So we are behind again, have to be truthful about it, on reviewing, uh, plans and specifications and issuing the permits. We're not behind on inspections. But we're gonna bring in some more people. We'll do whatever we have to do because folks need to know when they bring in a set of plans that there's a reasonable period of time for them to, uh, get their permit. We try to set some priorities, you know, the folks who need a roof fixed or a small project, we can do overnight practically. But sometimes a set of plans for a twenty-story building weighs about fifty pounds and that's a little harder to do. So you're right on. Uh, we are behind, uh, on the front end uh, and we're working on it to find solutions. Thanks for bringing it up.
We have time for two more questions. We're actually on overtime right now, trying to get as many as we can in tonight. Valerie's next. Valerie, welcome to our telephone town hall meeting. Valerie, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening. First of all, I want to say that I'm enthusiastic about this idea of holding a town hall meeting over the phone on a telco. I think it's fantastic and it's accessible to people who wouldn't be able other, any other way to, to come to a meeting in person. Then I, I don't wanna waste here any more time. I would like to say, as you mentioned before, there are only four accesses to the beach, Hallendale Beach, and they're very far away from each other. And it is difficult for the elderly to go from one to the other. And in between, there is a whole bunch of buildings, including the Diplomat Hotel and Residence and Residence Homes that virtually block any possible access to the beach. Even though it would be possible to access the beach in between each building, they sort of like have security or whoever block it. And they also say that the beach in front of this building is private, is theirs. Now, is there any way, first of all, I would like to know if that's true. If beach, I always thought the beach was private, public property. And I wanted to know if it's possible that public property has become private. And also I would like to know if there is any way the city could, um, uh, make or stipulate some accord with these buildings so that to let citizens access the beach and pri- and sit.
Let's, um, let's answer two questions. The first one, is the beach private? The answer is absolutely not. Uh, not even in Golden Beach where there are these single-family homes. The beach is public. Nobody can block it, uh, in terms of walking up and down on the beach. As a matter of fact, uh, over the next couple of years, there's a major beach renourishment project that will be coming where sand will be brought in from other parts of the state by truck, believe it or not, uh, uh, to widen out the beach. Uh, we have hurricanes, we have storms, uh, we have tides and you just have to constantly ensure that the beach is protected. So the beach is public and it will soon be wider. Now, on the issue of beach access, you know, I wish that, uh, people had thought more about this and that every one of the big buildings had some kind of walkway between it, but that's not gonna happen. Uh, uh, we have these four beach access points. We also have two gorgeous parks, uh, North and South Beach. Um, uh, and, uh, those are the access points and frankly, those are the only access points we're gonna have. we're gonna have. So we need to make those four beautiful, welcoming, safe, uh, um, and, and even improve them for handicap access with these special wheelchairs with giant tires that kinda let folks who are in a wheelchair get over the dune and out to the beach. So that's our program, we're working on it. But, uh, there just isn't gonna be any more access through these private buildings. So we're aware of your issue, uh, trying to make what we have better, but I just don't see a lot of expansion in the future.
And Howard, you're up. Howard, go ahead with your question if you would, please.
Uh, yes, I don't, don't mind, but pretty much, uh, my question wasn't gonna be about traffic, but you, a- after I gave it, you answered, uh, pretty much what I was gonna ask. So if I could, uh, change directions a little bit, uh, without upsetting anybody. The, I know coming forth, the city, there has been a lot of discussion about outsourcing, uh, essential services. I just wondered if you could, uh, comment on, uh, on what, where that is and what, what the city's position is on, uh, outsourcing essential services.
You know, Howard, it's a great question. At the end of the day, the resources that we have are limited. Nobody wants a tax increase, uh, our costs keep going up. So you have to find some solutions. I think last budget year, uh, the commission made it pretty clear that they didn't want to outsource, uh, entire departments, although there was some conversation about some of our programs, uh, being outsourced. More important to find a balance where you can use some private sector folks when it's more efficient, like I mentioned earlier, in the, uh, building permitting function. But, uh, I don't see a mass outsourcing. But my job is to find ways to do more with less. I always look at, uh, outsourcing and, uh, um, at the end of the day, it's policy that the commission makes. I can make recommendations, but they make the, uh, um, the decision. So I, I wanna close personally, uh, uh, saying thank you to the more than a thousand people that were involved in this call during the hour. I certainly, uh, thank you for, uh, staying on, listening, coming up with great questions. And I hope you all understand that we listened, we will follow up. This is a great city, getting better every day. And that, that, uh, sometimes what you read, uh, in various media or what people post on Facebook is, uh, far more personal than truthful. But that's okay, that's public life today. So again, thank you. I couldn't be happier than to be the city manager. And I wanna thank the people who helped to put this call together. But most importantly, the more than six hundred dedicated employees who protect us every day, emergency medical, firefighters, police, uh, who are out there in the hurricane at eighty miles an hour fixing broken pipes, you know, at, at eighty miles an hour. And, and, uh, these folks do that, uh, during the toughest times and they are there when we meet them. And we live in a great place and let's all work together to make it even better. Thanks for signing off. This is Roger Carlton, your city manager. And I also wanna thank you all on behalf of the city commission who, uh, are dedicated as well and, uh, making some great policy during some tough times. Thank you, times. Thank you, times. Thank you, times. Thank-